Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our May 30th Des Moines City Council Work Session. And we're going to open up with a special meeting right now. So I'll call the meeting to order and ask Clerk to please take role.
County?
Here.
President?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two is to approve the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none will go ahead. Item three is approving the First Amendment to Purchase and Sale Contract with Nationwide Mutual Insurance Company dated September 12th of 2022, Council Communication Number 23-272. Mr. Manager, would you want to make a quick comment?
Yes, if I could. Thank you, Mayor and Council Members. Just to be aware, as you read through the resolution, you'll see that this gives us more time in our due diligence processes. This is not a final answer yet on the actual purchase. And we do have a presentation being prepared to come to you and talk through all the space needs and options for solving those.
All right. Any questions, anybody?
Scott, will you, with that presentation, will you give us an analysis of new build compared to purchasing this and retrofitting something other than a new build somewhere?
Sure. What we'll do is update our new build estimates from a few years back that we looked at for the Police Department and also the replacement of the armory. So we'll bring that forward in that presentation.
And even the dollars be to maintain?
We still have that land, right?
Yes, immediately across the street for what was going to be the armory, new construction.
And also, they haven't built anything on the south side either, the parking?
On the east, or the south side, yes, that's correct. It's an L shape now available.
I mean, I assume that's where you would give us the cost analysis, building something there, right?
That's what he's going to do.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I'll move item three.
I'll second.
Item three has been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Six, yes.
All right. Item four is authorizing supplemental sites as part of a regional joint application from the Federal Highway Administration's Charging and Fueling Infrastructure Discretionary Grant Program and Providing Matching Funds, Council Communication Number 23-271. Any comments, Council?
If not, I'll move item four.
Item four has been moved and seconded.
I do have one quick comment. And I know I asked some questions about this piece. I just want to make sure, and I think there's been a lot of thought given to including the charging in at city facilities that are not in the core downtown. I do want to weigh at least one of them, like the libraries, the community centers make a ton of sense. I had questions just comparing charging at MSC versus additional charging capacity at some of our parking lots or parking ramps downtown, which I know are full at least some of the time and getting good use. And just making sure that we're thinking about when it's appropriate to expand there and what will get the most use because there might be some places that would get more use than some of these locations. And I recognize there are additional grant opportunities and rounds, but I hope we have the data to support where we're going rather than purely just expansion to areas not currently served.
You're talking about at MSC or MSC2?
Correct.
Gotcha, okay.
Because I don't think we'll have a lot of the broader public. I mean, there's some, but in terms of places where the public goes, MSC is not a place that the public typically goes and spends significant amounts of time. Certainly compared to libraries, community centers, or even the places that you could go and park at a public parking garage downtown. So those seem like higher value locations than MSC, which likely serves city employees and provides charging options there, which is of value. But if we have limited resources, I want to maximize the value of those.
All right, ask everybody to vote.
Six, yes.
Item five is to support for the workforce housing tax credit benefit application to be submitted to the Iowa Economic Development Authority by Hubble Realty Company for a project constructing 12 townhouse housing units south of Murphy Street between Southwest 8th and Southwest 9th Street, Council Communication Number 23-273. Any comments? Thoughts?
And then I'll move item five.
Second.
Item five has been moved and seconded. Ask everybody to vote.
Six, yes.
We get a motion to?
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The council meeting is adjourned. We'll move quickly right now into our work session. We'll turn it over. This is about capital planning. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council Members. We have a two-part conversation this morning, starting with our typical annual review of the CIP and the capital planning that's coming forward. We'll celebrate a little bit of what's just recently been accomplished in these conversations as well. And then the second part, I'll make comments before we get started on that one as well. So with that, I've got Steve here to present. Thank you, Steve.
All right. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council. Thank you for your time. My name is Steve Neber, Des Moines resident and Des Moines city engineer, here to give an update on what you all and our residents will be seeing in terms of construction this coming year, which is a lot. And so we're going to cover a number of things, everything from bridges to stormwater improvements to streets, our sewer separation update, sidewalks, where we're spending low cost in sales and service tax. So quite a few items here. I do want to remind folks that are watching that we do write on our city webpage, dsm.city. We do have a link to Projects Map. And if folks would like to click on that Projects Map, they can type in their address. And actually, it's also located on the engineering page if you want to go that route as well. But folks can type in their address and then it'll zoom into that location. It's a GIS built by our IT department and a really cool tool links to our project database. So folks can click on a city project and find out information about that project and also, most importantly, who they can call directly if they have any questions. And then that's just another pop-up window that pops up when they click on a project. It also shows where the project is funded out of the city's capital improvement program. So in terms of updates, we'll start with bridges. The city has made incredible progress on our bridges over the past 10 years. Just to give kind of a reference, for bridge inspections, you know, we, as a city, we do, we inspect every bridge every two years. And so we're doing it this summer, and so we have a consultant team help us with that. And in 2013, we had 14 structurally deficient bridges. Now, structurally deficient is a term that, it does not mean the bridge is unsafe, but it does mean that there are elements of the bridge that are in poor condition and need addressing. And so there were 14 bridges that were deemed structurally deficient. As of today, we're down to three. That's incredible progress. The three remaining all have funding programmed toward them. So, and again, it does not mean that the bridges are unsafe, but that's just, that was a benchmark that our bridge inspection staff use when they do inspections. So incredible progress there. Folks can see the list of bridges that have been completed over the past few years, and so quite a few large ones on that list as well. We have zero load-posted bridges, another thing to be proud of. We've got a number of bridges that are in the works or are planned for construction. Most notably, you probably saw our communication staff released some great news this past week about Second Avenue. The Second Avenue project is a few months ahead of where we, the schedule, and so opening that up. And so that project, again, the full replacement of the bridge over Birdland Drive, as well as since we were there, we rehabilitated the bridge over the Des Moines River, enhanced the cross-section itself, providing a bike trail on the east side and a sidewalk on the west side, as well as, you know, getting a full new, you know, improved bridges. So you can see the list of what's upcoming. The Viaduct, Southwest 8th, Southwest 9th, Guthrie Avenue Bridge over the Union Pacific Railroad, as well as we've got Walnut Street, the downtown bridge, and then we've got Flur Drive over the Raccoon River. So. And then another one that I had just, I forgot to mention on the previous slide, this was Southwest 9th over Middle South Creek. This was actually completely finished this spring. So, you know, that's a photo of that recent completion, so. Talk a little more about one of the projects on that list, Walnut Street Bridge. The city has secured 3.4 million in federal funds toward that replacement. We've also are almost fully complete with the design of that replacement. The plan was to replace it similar to the bridges upstream, Grand and Locust. And so we've been asked to put together some data. There has been some questions about alternatives for that bridge. You can see on the left there, Walnut Street Bridge. It is one of our, it carries 3,000 to 5,000 vehicles a day. It also carries a number of utility companies that use the bridge for the cross, to cross the river. There are 88 parking spaces today. With the new design, the new design would reconfigure the bridge, some to still provide one lane of traffic in each direction, but also provide buffered bike lanes. So it would alter one side of the parking spaces to parallel, so that 88 would drop to 75. It is one of two continuous routes from western downtown all the way to East 30th. And also, as we know, I think we had, I don't know the exact number, but 256 events downtown over the next six months or so. And so it does often serve as a detour when events occur on Locust and Grand. Here's, over on the right is a summary of the cost estimates for those. The current cost for replacement is 16 million, and that's for the bridge. Because we're doing the bridge, we would also look at doing the river wall balanced rate replacement, which is about 3 million. And as I mentioned, there's 3.4 million in federal funds available. We were asked to look at some alternatives. Our bridge engineers estimated that if we did a repair, if we want to call it a 10 to 15-year repair, doing structural patching, that would cost about 5 million. And then we were asked about a pedestrian bridge. The 15 million, the estimate they came up with was basically modifying the existing bridge. And so just to be clear here, and so what our bridge engineers say is the pedestrian loadings can be, are comparable, can be comparable to traffic loadings in the sake of, if you get large events on there. However, there could be alternatives we could look into. So we could look into potentially companies like Contec or Conspan can make prefab bridges that up to 240 feet long. So as an alternative, we could maybe modify the last, the outside spans and then try and come up with maybe a Conspan-type structure in the middle. That would be substantially cheaper than 15 millions. When I talk about Conspan, I'm talking about a bridge similar to like what Hubble put in across the Raccoon River. So, again, that could be substantially cheaper than the 15 million. The 15 million is actually, if we're designed a, the bridge is kind of similar to what it is today, you know?
Coleman Bridge?
Correct, yes, yep, yep.
And Steve, when you said parallel parking, is there going to be any angle in parking anywhere?
On one side, there would be, yep.
Back end or front end?
Back end, I believe, yep, yep.
I know you guys like that back end parking, but.
I'm not sure who likes it.
One of the things that I've struggled with, I mean, we assumed that, when you look at that repair option, from a loading perspective, I mean, we would have the ability to limit if we made the Walnut Street Bridge a pedestrian-only bridge, you know, like today. We'd have the ability to limit whether or not there were large events there and we needed to construct it for the same type of loading vehicle traffic, right?
If we were to load-post it, you mean, or?
Well, I don't know the engineering terminology, but I mean, you said the pedestrian, like to repair for pedestrian only and to remove vehicle traffic. You essentially said that the two are equivalent, right?
The, if we were to design a replacement bridge, kind of comparable to today, for pedestrians, it would be equivalent. The repair option would be, the 10 to 15 repair for 5 million would be just literally patching the bridge to try and keep it as it is for the next 10 years, so.
Right. I guess my question is, if that bridge no longer had vehicle traffic and you did repairs, could it last longer than 10 or 15 years?
Possibly, possibly, yeah. It could.
Right.
Depending on if we limited the loadings, like you said, and, you know.
And do you know, when was the last?
The thing, the reason I say possibly is because I've got it, the bridges over in this area are prone to scouring, and so we would, we would have to, we'd have to deal with that. So scouring, meaning the movement of materials around the foundations has been an issue with the bridges. So when we replaced them, we've been addressing that and armoring around the foundations. So that's why I say, you know, that there could be some other factors of.
That's a pretty important factor.
Is it, no matter?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The material does move. We used to, when we had people dive down, they would take measurements and surveys, so it was pretty incredible to see the amount, how much material moves underneath the river, but, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say on to that point, no matter what, you've got to fix a base of it. Because I've walked across it in some pretty tough shape on top, too.
Yeah.
You know, the sidewalks and everything crumbling. So there's going to be some amount of money. But my bigger concern is those that we develop this whole market district, the use of these roads are even going to be increasing. So to take out a bridge, I think, you know, we see how many people are using it now. I just think we have to be concerned about how many people are going to be in this area in the next 20 years.
Yeah.
As we build it all out. So that's why I would say I think it's necessary to, no matter what, you have to, it sounds like you got to fix the base because there's issues with the bridge, right?
Yeah.
Not that it's not safe, it just needs to be repaired.
Right, right.
Okay.
I mean, this bridge is deemed to be structurally deficient, but it is not at a point where it needs to be load-posted at this time, but.
There's definitely work that needs to be done on it.
Yep. The, you know, I know, it does only carry, when I say only 3,000 to 5,000 vehicles a day. I think the biggest importance, and in my mind, again, I would recommend that we keep it as functioning as is to vehicular and pedestrian traffic and bicycle traffic, adding the bicycle facilities, is the redundancy. You know, we only have a handful of crossings of this river. It is a continuous east-west route. And some, from a redundancy standpoint, I think, you know, with the, we have events like the fireworks on the bridges that occur every, with the Iowa Cubs. We have races coming up this weekend, dam to DSM. And so with, when you get events like that, it's, the redundancy is important. So, you know, we've talked this over as staff and that's our recommendation, so.
Could you help me with some additional data? I mean, like, for example, the MLK Bridge, which is about a quarter mile away. How many vehicles per day go over the MLK Bridge? And what would the capacity of that road be? And then similarly, what's the vehicles per day for Court and for Locust and for Grand? I mean, we had, I think, three or four bridges within a quarter mile that we've recently reconstructed.
Yeah, yep.
What, so what's the capacity, you know, what is the vehicles per day on those? And what's capacity for a road? I mean, these are constructed, I think, as two-lane at this point, right?
Yes.
For, with the exception of MLK, Court and Locust and Grand are all one lane in each direction. What's the capacity and what's the vehicle?
And I could produce a map that would maybe show that better, but my, from my recollection off the top of my head, the Martin of the Kings Canyon Parkway Bridges are somewhere in that, and I'm going to give you a bigger range, but it's in that 12,000 to 16,000 vehicle range. Today, the capacity is far more, far more than that. I mean, it would be, I mean, it's maybe at 60% capacity. So there's a lot more capacity on those being a multi-lane bridge. I think if I remember that, that corridor is designed for something like 30,000 vehicles a day, and so it's a lot, a lot more. The Grand Locust Bridges, the Grand, I think if I remember, was around that 8,000-plus vehicles a day. Typically, a two-lane roadway with, well, in this case, there obviously doesn't need to be turn lanes, but a two-lane roadway handles anywhere from 10,000 to 12,000 vehicles a day in that range. And then since there doesn't need to be a turn lane, it could be even a little more, but, so.
Right. I guess to make this decision, it would be helpful to know what the existing vehicles per day on those other bridges that are proximate are and what the capacity is that we could, we could handle traffic flow without that. I mean, I get the worry about building for the future and not constraining the market district, but it may end up being something where, I mean, I'm certainly open to a repair so that we can actually have better data and know if that is necessary before we spend those additional dollars. Because I think our budget's tight and we maybe need to look at how we do some of these things a little bit.
So Steve, yeah, I know historically we've had a bridge every block downtown, but I don't know if that's a luxury that we can afford with all the other needs for infrastructure. So that's what I'm struggling with. And also, the number of cities that, is there some comparison, like in their downtown districts that have a bridge every block for auto, for auto traffic? So that's what I'm struggling with. I just don't know if, when we have. I just don't know if when we have so many other needs, if if that's the best use of our dollars.
We don't have a lot of cities of our size that have sitting in the confluence of two rivers either. And there was a reason way back when they constructed those bridges, and I think that
Right.
Connie points out a good piece, and I know that you are wanting to look at the data, so we'll get the data to you and Josh and everybody else.
Yeah, so that, you know, it's been, let's see, was the Yonkers Fire nine years ago? Is that right? So there hasn't been a throughway to go across Walnut for quite a few years if and and now we've got fencing around the the kaleidoscope. So anyway, just give us some more information.
Yep, and we can we can we can compile that data. Again, I want to, you know, the some a big part of the recommendation is the redundancy and one making trying to make sure the rivers aren't a barrier. And so having more crossings is an advantage. And and from a from that and from a redundancy standpoint, just to that example, I mean, Walnut Street's under construction, so it's nice that we have Locust and Grand, right? Just as if Locust and Grand are in construction, it would it's nice to have have Walnut.
So yeah, it's nice to have. I just I don't know if we continue to have that. It's a block out of the way. If you if you had to go down to to Court or to, in this case, to Locust Street.
Right.
Anyway, yeah, some more information would be helpful, Steve.
Okay. Connie?
I guess within that information, I'd like to know about the base of the bridge because I still say, no matter what you have there, you got to fix a base. So what is the condition? How long will life will be and things like that, which I think you've already got some of that information. And we do have a couple of pedestrian bridges already, which is a block down this way.
The, yep, and the the design, just to be clear, just so we're on, you know, the design was about a million dollars to do the whole engineering aspect, which is almost done. Obviously, that was for full replacement. If we do anything else, we would need to start start over, not start over, but it'd be a different design, whatever that is, if it's a pedestrian bridge or a rehab or. And again, the reason we're recommending the replacement over the repairs, when you actually map out the funding from a lifecycle standpoint, it it makes sense to replace it fully rather than repair it. And then 10 years have to fully, you know, look at the same exact dollar bill.
You might want to throw those numbers in the data.
Okay.
Since we've already spent money on planning this, we're going to have to spend more money if we decide to pay.
Okay.
That should be probably part of the numbers you're going to give us.
Okay, thank you. And Reagan gets to, as we know, gets to continue to sell the T-shirt that they have there. And so FLUR Drive, we've been doing some, this is phase three that we're on. It is the final full reconstruction program phase. We would be looking at resurfacing down by the airport to the south in the in the future after this project. But in terms of full reconstruction, I know this is going to be the media joke, but it is the final reconstruction phase of these of the mile and a half project that we've been doing. And so, again, phase three, just like the other phases, fold up reconstruction. We've got the utility, we have had some utility work going on out there. Des Moines Water Works is also going to do some improvements to their water main. Since we're doing the full reconstruction, again, it's complete rebuild up from the dirt all the way up to a brand new full pavement structure. We are making some improvements. We're going to fill in, there's a lot of sidewalk gaps along this stretch as well in the commercial areas. And so we're filling those gaps in, as well as we do have a right turn lane. And there's some, if you notice, when you turn out of Hy-Vee, there's some acceleration lanes. Those are not not needed, and they make it more challenging for pedestrians to cross. And we want to tighten that area up a little bit and take get rid of those, if you call them acceleration lanes, as well along that corridor. So the utility works have been, you know, the utilities have been out there. And so it'll be similar to the other side where we tear up the pavement, you know, say for the northbound lanes and then have traffic head to head for the southbound lanes. It is a two-year project, just like the other phases. So but again, staging, you know, the the road carries 30,000 vehicles a day. We obviously can't close it. We've got a lot of businesses along there. We've got large neighborhoods along there. So you'll see how we gap the intersections as we move along through there.
Steve, when you say future from McKinley to Army Post, what do you mean by that? When do you think you would do something like that?
That would be like 2025 would be, yeah. So the next year, we would go and mill and overlay.
Would that just be the two-inch asphalt you'd tear up?
Roughly, yep. Mill down a couple inches and then pave a new surface. Yeah.
And the base is good there?
There would be, it is far better than what the the sections we've been working on, but there would be still some base repairs, isolated base repairs.
Would you fix some of the curbing that's busted off along?
But yeah, but yes, it could be spot spot curb replacement. It wouldn't be a full curb replacement.
Would you wait until after the airport is constructed with all the heavy equipment that's going to be on that road? Would you wait until, I mean, you think it's smart to do it in 2025 when they're going to start building a new terminal or parking garage?
We, I mean, we could look at that schedule. That was just where we have money programmed for it, you know, so.
Just might be a way to take a look at it.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, putting a new road down and then having a bunch of dump trucks go on it might not be the smartest use of our money.
Yep.
And Steve, for the north section from George Flag Parkway to roughly where MLK intersection, is that in the plan to resurface that at some point?
Uh, not, I don't I don't know for a full capital improvement project, but I think our public works team has been doing some patching or has patching programmed or inlays programmed to kind of, but I'm not aware of a.
Fill bottles.
Well, no, also, they do they things where they mill, they'll mill, you know, kind of like on Southwest 9th.
Yeah, we probably, yeah, we probably need to do a little bit more than between George Flag and MLK.
Right, right. There've been some some questions about, so when is FLUR really all all going to be done? So I think it would help the public to know when that's supposed to be done.
Right now, we don't have a full a programmed capital improvement on that on that piece.
The piece at the north end.
The north end, correct. Yep, yep.
Using that machine to strip down between the curb and, I don't know, he does four or five feet off the curb, that might be helpful.
Okay.
Build directions.
Yeah. Or you're asking about the, yeah.
That's the same question I had. Anyone who drives it knows.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
North of, right, north of George Flag needs some work.
Another quarter that is is rivaling FLUR for construction is Ingersoll. This is, you can see the phasing there. This was, there's a couple of components that go into this one. One, there was a a plan concept that was developed by the avenues. They hired a architecture firm to to do do a streetscape revitalization plan. And then also, we had stretches such as, you know, between 28th and 31st, due to the poor condition, needed full pavement reconstruction. So so now we're dealing with, again, full full complete removal of the pavement. We had some sewers to get in there with our sewer separation efforts and storm sewers. And and then also, we got the streetscape that 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 was planned as well. And so so this is, the phase three is is finishing up this year, which goes to, so that means we'd be done from from Martin Luther King Junior Parkway to 28th Street. And then the next phase would be 28 to 31st. The reason there was work up by 35th and 41st is because we were putting a sewer in up there for our sewer separation. And so we put it back, though, you know, since we're completely tearing up the north whole north half of the pavement, put it back per the streetscape plan. So.
So the city staff didn't design this, what we've got going on there? They hired a consultant and you approved it?
The the avenues hired a architectural firm to develop the concept of what it would look like, like the the plant, you know, the planter areas.
Full well.
And and then we 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 designed it in terms of like the engineering plans of the grades and making it all work and.
And this is the only part in the entire city that kind of looks like this, right?
Actually, East Fourth in in the market district will be similar to this, that working with the JSC team for that concept. So East Fourth will actually look similar, although their their planter areas, like these are just normal planter areas, their planter areas will be recessed and there'll be bios bioswells. So.
Yeah, I just I've had multiple people, and I don't represent this area, but just complain about the the new streetscape, whether it be parking, whether it be able to pull out of a place and have to turn left and you can't turn left, you know, you have to turn right because it's just so, I don't know, I I think it's an absolute nightmare what we did down there.
Connie?
I just want to say, well, you can kind of see in the picture, the curves. I mean, I appreciate when it's snowing, you can't see the curves, but these curves are already breaking away only because, so the maintenance issues of designs like this, I think we need to take into account and also the fact that I think we paid $100,000 more just to remove snow because there's no place to put it.
Right.
Because we have to clear the bike paths. But I'm just saying, going forward, I think we have to take into account the extra cost. I'm concerned that this is in a few years, you're going to have to be repairing all of this, which in normal cases seems like a short time. But I think we just need to be careful of some of those issues.
I will just say that you should not only talk to the avenues, you ought to talk to the business owners up and down there who are really concerned about what's happening to the parking, what's happening to, as Connie pointed out, and what Joe pointed out, circulation going through there, you know, losing 19 parking spaces just between 35th and 38th Street on the north side of the street only. You, we created a real nightmare for businesses who I don't think were ever included in in the avenues discussion.
Well, sort of related. I think that good news is we have three neighborhood nodes that are having some success, Ingersoll, Dogtown, and Highland Park and Oak Park. And we should cheer the success of the neighborhood nodes, but with that brings some parking issues. And, you know, not everyone's going to take a bus or walk or bike to the neighborhood nodes, so we got to do something.
Yeah, I mean, you you're affecting people's livelihood here, what we did there. I mean, it it affects businesses. People won't go down there. I've heard multiple people say, I won't, I won't go down there anymore. I mean, that's that's the unfortunate thing. I hope you attract more people with the multimodal that we did to make up for the people that drive and won't go down there and try to fight for a parking spot or, I mean, it's just, it's it's a nightmare down there. And I'm not making it up. I mean, I've I've heard it from multiple people.
The good news is there's a lot of people wanting to go.
That's good.
Yeah, so there's a good news about it, about that. And Dogtown is feeling some of the pressure. So anyway, you know, we probably have a, well, probably, we have an excess of parking downtown, and now we have some neighborhood nodes. I guess it would be difficult to move a parking ramp.
Right, don't need a parking ramp. Right, just didn't need to lose.
We we need some solutions and.
Yeah, I I agree, we need solutions. And one of the things to to keep in mind, I mean, you know, we we have, and just out of sight in this picture, is a good example of a parking lot that sits empty during the prime time. There's lots of surface lots on that stretch of Ingersoll that the property owners do not share. And so you have parking that is crunched, and then you have surface lots that are sitting there empty, patrolled by Crotto. And we've got to figure out how to work collaboratively for the benefit of of the whole corridor, because that's part of the solution. I recognize that's not not all of the solution, but there there it's not that there is a lack of parking in that area, it's that there's a lack of sharing some of that parking. I mean, Chain &amp; Spoke is a good example, where there is literally a parking, a parking lot right next to this new coffee shop, and the owner of that parking lot refuses to work with the new owner of that building on on any sort of negotiation for shared parking. That parking lot sits empty all the time, and there's a new business that is willing to pay for it, but that owner refuses. And we have countless examples of that on the corridor that, I mean, while, yes, that's a parking problem, it's it's also, I mean, there's also other elements of the problem that we need to work through. And I think we can work through and find those solutions, but it's not saying that it it is simply lack of parking is not the only thing that is at play.
Or lack of willingness to walk two blocks to a parking, from a parking place. You know, the argument that I can't turn left, well, you know, go to any county seat town in Iowa, and you can turn left just about any time of the day. We are a a city, and and part of those issues involve finding a different way around. It might mean three right turns when you can't make a left turn. But that, I mean, obviously, we're hearing a lot of complaints this week. The weather is incredible, so people are going to be complaining about other things. So they need a few things to complain about.
So so I, Councilman, I I appreciate your view on the surface parking lots, but, I mean, you realize that's someone else's property and and they have insurance that they have to pay for their own property. And if someone would come on that property and and damage would be made or a shooting would be done or some type of violence, then that would go against that property owners, not not anyone else's, not the city's, not, that's private property. So if the solution is to start using other people's surface parking lot and trying to force them to do that, that that's that's not a good solution.
There there've been contracts for shared use of space for years
Contracts are different.
That can address that liability. I mean, that 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 is a solution that would provide a lot of parking. I know that there are business owners who are willing to contract with with folks who have surface lots. So, I mean, there there are, there are multiple options that we have that have not been fully explored. Some of that is going to take cooperation from some of the existing property owners. And I recognize that those property owners have every right to negotiate and every right to to say, no, I don't want to do that. But but that is a piece of what needs to be looked at.
I just want to add one thing. I thought my ears perked up when you mentioned a towing company because I think that's an unfair shot to take against a tow company. That tow company is hired by that property owner to patrol those lots. So that that towing company is doing exactly what they were hired for. You know, we've dealt with parking lots for years. These guys go out and find their parking lots. I know we had this out in down in the East Village years ago, where, you know, they'd come out in the morning and there was beer bottles, there are liquor bottles, there's all kinds of stuff in their parking lots from people parking there that had no right to park there. It's personal property. If it's if you're not, if it doesn't say you can park there, then you shouldn't be parking there. And it's up to us to work out some other solutions. But personal property rights are 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 very important. And if I own a parking lot and I don't want you parking there, you don't park there.
And I just think we're very fortunate to sit up here with a gentleman that owns a business on this street. He's giving us an opinion of of his business and other business owners that he speaks to. We don't take that seriously. I don't know what what we're doing. I mean, there's a personal, I mean, he has he has personal knowledge of what's going on on the street, not to mention all the other people that are telling us these things. I mean, it, we have an issue on this street, and part of it was the design of how it was put together. And I'm not sure who signed off on it or who made it all worthwhile, but if they didn't talk to the business owners that their livelihood is from the street and the traffic, I mean, that that's an issue. And so I know we've spent a ton of money and a ton of time. I don't know how we could change it now, but good luck with the surface parking. I mean, further down to the to the east, you've got a brand new building that's for sale that has, what, 10 parking spots, and it was built for $5 million? And we allowed that. And we allowed that. I won't say anymore.
Let's move on past Ingersoll.
Another one of our corridors, University Avenue, looking at basically the whole corridor, and also in coordination with what Windsor Heights is doing. The road was a four-to-five-lane road throughout the stretch between Sixty-third and and Twenty-Fifth. Yeah, the the, this road typically only has like twelve thousand vehicles a day, so obviously a four-to-five-lane road is 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 way over overbuilt. And and so we we're looking, we're right sizing this corridor. We've already started this in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty in the stretch between Sixty-third and Forty-Eighth Street. And so as as folks have seen the news, you know, anytime we do work on, you know, we are a city with older infrastructure, we do, we do find things, and so, and so as we were installing a sewer as part of our sewer separation efforts, you know, we 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 had programmed the CIP to resurface the road, we also have our sewer separation effort, so we're putting the sewer in in coordination with this project. As we're digging the sewer, we found one, unfortunately, a couple locations where there were collapsed sanitary sewer segments, and also we found this wood structure, looks like a, almost like a small wood bridge. It's not fully uncovered, I I don't know for sure what it is or what it's for, but we just, we we do find stuff when we do these projects, and so that just happens. But definitely excited about this project, again, converting the this stretch that's going on right now, you know, between Thirty-First and Thirty-Ninth is a five-lane road, so converting that to three lanes. Again, this goes right through the heart of huge neighborhoods, so making it three lanes will make it much easier for pedestrians to cross, also to try and reduce the speeds, eliminate that jockeying effect with folks that we have on some of our multi-lane roads that may make NASCAR drivers jealous. And so, so there's a lot of improvements going on here for forever, you know, for all users of the roadway, as well as resurfacing the road to improve the road condition as well. So, and again, like I said, a lot of storm sewer improvements going along there as well. This 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 area did have some combined sewers, as we know.
Steve, on that drawing, the the blue squares toward the Thirty-Fifth Street, is that a pedestrian crossing, is that what that indicates?
Yep, I I appreciate you pointing that out, yep. So there are locations where, one, not only going down to the three lanes, but we are in coordination with DART and doing some pedestrian crossing improvements where we actually had a refuge, so that way folks can look one way for traffic, get to the refuge, and then look the other way for traffic, making it much easier to to cross. So those are coordinated with the DART stops along the corridor, so there'll be multiple of those along the corridor as well.
Will DART pull in or are they stopping right there on the street?
Uh, DART, DART's preference is so, is to stay in the lane, so they they will not, they will not be pulling off into a.
Because that's interesting when you get down here, and I'll wait till the next one, but the the Uptown Shopping Center, I was going by there the other day, and those buses do pull in. They don't stop right there, they pull in to make it.
So we did have to work with them, there is, this being on the, I think it's Route Sixty, by the Uptown Shopping Center, they do have one location where there's a, it's they call it like a, I don't know, it's a staging area, but it's like where the buses will stop for a long period of time, and the drivers can, you know, take a break and then also get back on schedule.
And he was picking up people.
They they, there's a stop there too, but but if you notice, they'll stop for a while at that location, you know. Yep, right by the, right by the Hy-Vee there, that there's, that's where they, so we we have worked with them to accommodate that, they they need to keep that where they pull off and and sit for a while, you know, so.
That would solve some of our headaches in some of these other nodes.
But but the other, but the other bus stops, the the normal bus stops, they, their intention is to stay in the travel lane, one, for the efficiency of the buses, if they pull off, then they have trouble getting back into the the travel lanes.
Have you been behind one of those buses? They they just start pulling out.
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
Connie?
I know there was some discussion from the owner of the Uptown Shopping about burying lines, and I think they're trying to get something scheduled to bury some of the lines and electrical lines. So what's involved in all that?
Yep, so we we've met with the the main property owner who owns actually a property on both sides, and we've had multiple meetings with them that that the costs, it's a, it's a, it's a cost issue. We have those costs, we've presented those costs to the property owner. We've also looked at, could we reroute them? We had Mid-Am look at, could they route them to the north or on the backside, on the north side through the alley, and that was almost the same cost to do that. And so, so there, to be frank, there there just isn't the money to bury the overhead lines on this on this quarter.
I thought he was willing to bury some of the overhead lines, and he was looking at us to share some of the cost.
That we've.
Isn't that what it says in that email? Because I think we all got the copy of the email.
Willing to spend about a hundred thousand on a million and a half dollar cost.
Yeah, a hundred thousand probably isn't going to be able to do it, but I guess we shared the cost with him and.
It's a million and a half.
Yeah.
I I don't.
So how come that's in our, I mean, that's in our form-based code that we want it all buried? We're we're gonna probably go ahead and adjust that so we don't, when they come in for site plan compliance, we're not gonna have them bury the lines then? That, is that what we're gonna try to do now?
So, so again, here.
I'll ask him that.
This is the, this is the, you know, when we talk about, when we we scope out projects, right? I mean, the project started as a resurfacing project. The the, we had the sewer work for the, for one piece for closest creek and one piece for sewer separation. And then when we, because, you know, in our planning efforts, we wanted to convert the roadway to three lane and get a continuous bicycle facility, make it safer for pets to cross, we we were doing all those improvements as part of the resurfacing. When we got to the nodes, it was with the the bus stops and the crossings, it 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 was, it made more sense to do, to pull the bikes off, like you see here in this picture, just through the commercial nodes. And so there is a little more work going on there, but again, it's it's literally a a scoping project. And and so when we say, well, why don't we bury the overhead lines? That would be the same question we would ask, you know, why why we wouldn't bury them on Hubble or or other corridors or Second Avenue.
It's in our code.
Yeah.
For site.
When they're doing a site, a site plan, we're, we're, we have a resurfacing public improvement project here.
So, but we're not gonna do it, but we're gonna require somebody else to do it when they want to reinvest in our building. That's not a question for you.
Sure.
We'll have, we'll have another conversation.
Right, right, right.
That's just another.
The the challenge, you know, yeah, that's a different conversation, but it's, is when you bury them is, is when they're doing a new building, let's say, they can design the service to be underground. If I were to bury these, the overhead services still would be on top of the building, and then we just, we put a pole right next to them. And so, so that that's probably some of the reason why they're done with the, like, actual development.
Connie?
So is this an example of kind of why we're having this meeting is that we started with a resurfacing and we kept adding things? So the cost kept going up and up? I mean, and so this is other projects that we've had along the way?
Well, the, ye- yes, to some degree, yeah, but the sewer work obviously made sense, but you're right, that is a champ, the scope creep is is definitely a a challenge, to say the least, yeah.
So, okay, I just, so originally it was just resurfacing, then it became sewer, and then it became a whole streetscape, because as long as we got.
Well, and again, not a streetscape, the the most, the most of the corridor is just milling and overlaying and then putting in sewers. But we're, we are putting in sewer through here, so it allowed us some opportunity to and further enhance the pedestrian.
Yeah, which is very nice.
It is.
Then it comes.
But it's not a street, we're not putting in planters, or we're not, 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 like, yeah.
And I think some of these enhancements at this node was recommended by Invest DSM, but they they recognized that this was an opportunity, as we're doing, but but you're right, it is a bit of a, a scope creep.
From the original budget we had.
Right. It makes it hard, because the original budget was two million dollars to do something like twelve blocks, two and a half.
And it's now.
And how much is it now? That's what I was trying to look.
Just to curious, I mean, it's just from a point from this is, we have the alternative, what's our options? And if we want something more, then what are we?
I'm struggling to find.
The the Twenty-Fifth to Thirty-Ninth is, I know the piece that's going on now is three million.
Okay.
So, but again, that that does include the sewer piece in there as well, so.
Okay, just curious.
Yep.
And going back to Ingersoll, I mean, we have, we have, uh, like, another ten million dollars budgeted for that, rest of that mess that we're gonna do.
Again, I think this is a historical investment in infrastructure, to say the least. You can see there's not too many corridors, we're not doing a lot of work on it. Here's Indianola Avenue. Again, a lot of development has occurred around this corridor. It was a a rural two-lane roadway, and so this project, excuse me, urbanizes that roadway, putting curbs and gutters, new storm sewer systems. Also, when we talk about scope, you know, we get in there, well, now we should do the sanitary sewer replacement, so we've added the sanitary sewer replacement since we're tearing up the road, and then also putting in a multi-use trail on one side and sidewalk on the other. And so this project is currently under construction and making its way from, this is a picture looking on the north section toward closer to East Army Post Road, and then making our way south. And obviously, the big challenge is we we've got to get through Pine here in June, because that is a challenge for, as Councilman Ngata knows, for the residents who live to the east of there, they have to now detour around a pretty substantial, oh, thank you, thank you, um, um, a pretty substantial detour they have to take right now, so.
Well, I mean, the project's been delayed a year.
Uh, yeah, we lost, we lost.
We've had the road closed for an extra year because of Mid-America and and utility work. So, you know, these these neighbors thinking it was gonna be done this year, now we're extended it for another year. So is any part of this road open? I mean, I know it's not open down by East Fourteenth, I'd seen that was closed, where Pine is in that area. Are we allowing any type of?
The, other than using the, the, we had a temporary road to get to the properties along there, the hope is, the plan is to have Indianola from East Army Post down to Pine open by the end of June, and hopefully it's sooner, but, so that way, once you get that stretch open, then at least those folks aren't detouring, that they have the biggest detour is is the ones on the east of, on, off of Pine, east of Indianola. So you can see the stage is there, the hope is to be down to the south by end of twenty-three down at US Sixty-Ninth. Another full reconstruction project, McKinley Avenue, again, has started up this spring, lots of utility work been going on, Mid-Am has already moved the poles and 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 been moving lines, doing utility locations, moving gas mains, so that the water main work, Des Moines Waters can have the water main replaced that just started. And so, again, this is a, you know, the 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 schedule is looking at, you know, start of this spring, be fully complete by spring of twenty-twenty-five. Hopefully, the roadway work is done by end of twenty-four. Again, you can see the cross-section, currently it's a rural roadway with ditches and and hardly any sidewalks, and so this puts in a new fold-up, fold-up reconstruction, new curbs, new sidewalks, new bike trail, bike, or shit, multi-use trail. This is part of the the overall sewer separation efforts. This project's led by our our colleagues at the Waste Water Reclamation Authority, so obviously everyone's aware, Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, there, the sewers going down the north lanes of the pavement, there are, there are, they do have archaeologists on site to monitor the excavations as it's going through, you know, an area where there's known cultural, potential for cultural artifacts, so there are archaeologists on site as they as they work. And so you'll see that they have the whole stretch of Martin Luther King Junior Parkway open between, say, you know, or under construction, all the way down to Sixteenth where it goes north, they're trying to get as much sewer as they can in coordination with the work that the archaeologists are doing. But there's the overall schedule, so the section in green, since we've got a massive sewer, it's like sixty-six inch diameter, over five, you know, five and a half feet, that goes right through this area on the western edge of downtown, we've got these kind of of unique, unique intersections, I would say, with the Fluor Drive Bridge and Grand Avenue and Locust and Eighteenth Street. And so with the large sewer going through there, we took a look at it and can do some reconfiguration, and so, and so, and that now, you know, again, before Martin Luther King Junior Parkway was there, this was the way you could get down to the airport. And now we have Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, so much less traffic going over Fluor Drive, the Fluor Drive Bridge there. And so now, if you're going eastbound on Grand Avenue, instead of kind of going through the unique intersections, you would just turn right on Seventeenth Street, and then you can go down to Locust that way. But it will provide a lot better, one, more green space, it also allows us to get a pedestrian bicycle facility through there, again, also very nice to have right next to a school, you know, with adding that green space and as well, so. And this also did allow us to do, to convert some of the streets down to Fifteenth Street to two-way. So that's the, if you look at the schedule I had just up, that's in the twenty-twenty, they'll probably let it maybe later this year, so they probably see most of the work twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five time.
So how do they get to the parking behind Central Campus and the access to those doors and everything?
There would, yep, and so we did work with the school there, so see, if you look at right where Eighteenth Street is, there actually is a drive right there, yep. One way they could. Yep.
Dates on it? I don't think I might, oh, there's the printout with the color, with the the dates, never mind. We've got it, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-five, okay, there, I see it now.
Steve, if you could go back to the previous slide one more time, thank you.
This one?
Yeah, so when you do the one-way to two-way conversion, that, while that is being done, that doesn't impact any of the events that happen around the Western Gateway Park, right? So you can do this part, that kind of the uncoupling of the the one-way streets, and as you're working through that, you don't really impact any of our summer festivals that occur in the Western Gateway Park area.
Yeah, I mean, between Fifteenth and and Seventeenth, yeah, that we.
Other than the streets being closed, but it doesn't impact the, like, the setup of Arts Festival and other thing, it shouldn't.
Correct, correct, yeah, yeah.
All right, I just wanted just to confirm that, yeah.
Yeah, yep. All right, sewer separation effort, this has been a massive effort undertaken by our city. I think it's like seventy, seventy-eight million roughly we've spent since twenty-seventeen to eliminate what are combined sewer overflows, and they're showing us the red dots on the map. And so this, what this sewer I just talked about, you know, the city did the sewers in the neighborhoods, and so that's where the seventy-eight million comes from, but then the WRA is doing that sewer to get up to that red dot on High to to eliminate that overflow. And so we are seeing the finish line of this effort, Lower, Lower Oak and Highland Park, and that the efforts in that neighborhood have been completed. This is just a a picture of Tiffin Street, which is a pervious, we've also been doing some improvements to also reduce stormwater flows, so this is a pervious paver street. also reduce storm water flows, so this is a pervious, uh, paver street, so the water actually goes through the pavement.
Did you say we're about done with the sewer separation?
We are seeing the finish line, yep, yep.
How much additional, I mean, is that, I mean?
Yep, and I'll show it here, I'll show the last couple phases here that we have from a neighborhood standpoint. And I do want to be clear, there, there will still be combined sewers in the city of Des Moines. There are some that just aren't feasible, the downtown ones, uh, but this will, uh, include all the work in the neighborhoods. So, near west side sewer separation, that one, uh, that one is, uh, is, is completed. And, and so the near west, I'm sorry, just give, uh, I was my. Near west, this, and then we get to western Ingersoll, yep, yep, yep. So, when we say near west, this is, uh, you can see the Woodland Cemetery on the right there, uh, and, and then, so if we go, the one that still is remaining is, is a couple of things. Riverbank, King Irving, that neighborhood is, that one is complete, except for the piece in yellow that was, that is to be done with Second Avenue Reconstruction. So, that's, we've done the outlet in green that goes to the river, but along Second Avenue, we do need to install a storm sewer.
And when do we start Second Avenue? I thought that was this year that we were doing.
Uh, is, I think, is the letting later this year, yep, so letting later this year, so it would start next year, so.
Did we push it back a year?
Yes, yep. So, this is the one that's remaining, uh, it's called Western Ingersoll Sewer Separation. You can see there, they're trenching along Ingersoll Avenue, uh, and so, uh, this one, uh, the first phase, uh, which is shown in yellow, uh, is, is substantially complete, as well as Phase Two. Uh, so the yellow and green, uh, substantially complete, Phase Three in blue is the one that still has, uh, uh, work to be done, but we're hoping to get that work done. So, you see they're working now at Thirty-Fifth and Grand, uh, and so we're hoping to have that work done substantially complete by the end of this year. So, again, that, that would be the end of the large neighborhood sewer separation project.
Where is this stormwater going to? Where does it, what path does it follow?
So, so this, this would take it, uh, it, it's going, if you, so the I-235 is a divider, but it all ultimately is going west to east. So, um, so that's where, so what, right now, right now, it, or I would say, before we did this effort, let me go back to the screen here.
None of those green lines connect, Steve, none of those lines connect on that other page.
Two existing sewers that we've put in, yep, yeah, we've been building this, yep. So, so before we did the sewer separation effort, if we look at kind of the west piece of this yellow, like, so out to Forty-second Street, and the stormwater makes its way west to east, if we got a major rain event, then that combined sewer overflow at High would, would be opened and released. And so, so it's all west to east to the river, but now we're putting in a large, uh, storm sewer, uh, a, a large sewer up to High, or the WRA is putting a large sewer in up to High, and then we're building new storm sewers in our neighborhood. So, it used to be the intakes, the storm intakes on the road were going into the same, into the sanitary sewer, so.
But it drains into the river.
Yeah, the overflow, what, the overflow, before we did this effort, yes, would go, if that, we open that overflow, the, the sanitary sewer system would go into the river.
But the stormwater does that now naturally?
Yes, yeah.
Stormwater will make its way to the river.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, that's, that was my question.
Well, that's, that's why we have the over, the overflows, so it relieves the pressure there instead of it going into the basements, but, um.
Yeah.
Massive work.
Yes, I, and I'm disappointed, I should have, I want to add up the miles of sewer that we've installed in the past, like, six years. It, it'd be miles and miles of sewers.
And this goes back to the decree, like, nine, early nineties?
There is a, yeah, yep, we're going to, there's a consent decree with the state to, to do this work, and.
This is a thirty-year.
The separation, right? Yeah, yep.
Since ninety-three.
Yeah.
We had a little flood here then.
Just a tiny one.
So, so speaking of flooding, uh, this is the Highland Park neighborhood. Um, FEMA had, as you know, went through a remapping effort, uh, with their flood insurance rate maps. This area has, has experienced flooding in the past, and such FEMA had, has mapped a good, a good portion of this area as a special flood hazard area, which affects a hundred and seventy-five properties, uh, which means if they have a, if they have a mortgage, and typical mortgages, almost all of them are backed by the federal government, because there's a federal asset, they would mandate that these folks have, uh, flood insurance. And so, uh, so here, we have, uh, um, undertaken a massive effort, uh, to improve drainage in the Highland Park neighborhood by installing about a mile of sewer, a large diameter sewer, as well as, like, well over two million cubic feet of, of stormwater detention throughout this area, from working with a church to put an underground parking, or underground detention underneath the parking lot, to installing some actual, uh, stormwater detention basins, uh, in this area. There's the parking lot that was done, uh, finished, uh, a year and a half ago or so. Uh, so all, you can see all the chambers underneath those parking lots, and also allowed us to kind of clean up that whole little area with putting in sidewalks and, uh, as well. Um, and then we've been working from, the, the drainage in this area goes to the northwest. Uh, Hamilton Drain, it used to be a drainage district, and I guess just the name just stuck. Uh, there's not, there's not a drainage district anymore, uh, but it still calls that. And so, uh, as, as Councilman Westergaard knows, uh, you know, the, the folks were surprised, the, the drainage for the area was predominantly conveyed by what is known as the Rocky Place Storm Sewer, a woodbox sewer that runs essentially from the northwest corner of this picture up at Aurora and Second, all the way diagonally through the, the neighborhood and under a number of people's houses, uh, so they were surprised to find out that.
Why would we put that, let people build houses on top?
Yeah, so, so I, this was a situation probably where, where a sewer was put in in the nineteen thirties, and then the houses came later, and the sewer probably just aligned with where the flow path goes, and then the houses came later in the fifties, and, and so, yes, some people unfortunately were surprised to find this out. So, we are eliminating that and putting in new storms, a new massive sewer. Uh, you can see the size there, some of them I could walk in, and so not only are we putting in the massive sewer, but we're putting in stormwater detention basins, so.
Could you go back to the previous slide just for one second? I noticed there's two Aurora avenues there, and, uh, maybe you should fix that.
Oh, whoops, yep, no, that's a typo, thank you, thank you, yeah, yep.
Oh, and Steve, as long as you're talking about retention basins, I heard some really great compliments about you and your staff working with CIS on some pilot projects to put some floating, um, gardens in some of the retention basins, and, and, I, I mean, you are taking compliments this morning too, aren't you? I just want to make sure that's all right, but that's really creative, and I applaud you for, for working on that.
And I appreciate, I appreciate that, I, I would also like to share, you know, this is a, a combined effort, uh, uh, you know, Jonathan Gano, Patrick Bean, and Adam Smith and our team, Steve Johnson, our team, we all worked together on these, these plans, so.
And at some point, it'd be great to learn where those first, um, retention basins are, um, yeah, that'd be terrific, thanks.
Thank you. Here's another one, uh, and I, and a number of, of you on the council remember our June, uh, twenty-eighteen event. Uh, it was devastating, to say the least, uh, uh, and, uh, and so, our city council, you all accelerated, uh, a, a project, and we went before, uh, a packed room, uh, a packed gymnasium at the northwest community center, and, and, and said our goal was to get from essentially where you see the one A and two A. So, so this is what's known as the closest creek watershed. So, basically, the stormwater flows from the upper left on the screen, northwest, so by where the fourteen, thirteen, and one B are, kind of comes down southeasterly toward the one A and two A, and then, then turns back northeast toward the nine, toward the Des Moines River. So, that's, that's where the water wants to go, so if we would, were to have looked at historical maps a hundred plu, a hundred years ago, that's where you would see the water generally go. And so, of course, unfortunately, when the, the event happened, the, uh, event happened in June of twenty-eighteen, that's when the system gets overwhelmed, that's where the water wants to go. And so, um, uh, there's been, there was a plan to install new storm sewers, larger conveyance. Uh, we revised that plan, uh, to incorporate stormwater detention into that. So, two A and two B and one B, shown on that map, uh, kind of throughout there, those are actually stormwater basins that we've, we've added in, uh, and so, to kind of build in, again, not just focusing on conveyance, but also store water to allow the system to flush out, and, you know, so the peak flows aren't all hitting at once. So, obviously, very happy with the progress of this, uh, we had a, a full-packed, uh, uh, building of folks who remember very clearly that we said our goal was to try and get from the one A, two A area up to one B by the end of this year. And so we are, uh, we are on target to do that. So, uh, so one A, two A, two B, and one B are all complete. Three is the one that's under construction, uh, and again, this is, again, the chambers underneath one of the roadways in this area. Uh, here is also improving capacity under Beaver Avenue, and then when we talk about stormwater detention here, uh, between Beaver and Thirty-fourth by Whitmer Park, uh, the flows used to go through an old wood box. There we have more of those old wood boxes again, so we opened up the box and are utilizing the ravine for stormwater detention. And then we've got another new basin, uh, this was an area where, uh, another large stormwater basin was installed.
Can I give you another compliment?
Yep.
Gloria Hoffman, who is, was integral in the stormwater accolades on how it's working, she's very happy with it and very excited that it did get completed, even though, you know, totally impacted her both ways from the flooding and how they rebuilt, but she was full of compliments.
Good.
For everyone in the staff, Public Works, and your department too.
Thank you, yep. Yep, so this was, uh, and so right now, where we're working is on Franklin Avenue, installing, again, large, large diameter sewer, and we'll make the right turn and go up Forty-Eighth Street, and then that's the stretch to get to, up to that Forty-seventh and Holcomb area, so, so.
So, is all of Franklin closed right now?
Yeah, nope, yeah, not all, it's just, yeah, down by, uh, by Forty-Eighth. And there's a picture, you can see the size of the storm sewer pipes that we're installing down Franklin Avenue there. So, again, conveyance and detention, and I'll go quick through the levy program, because I think we are looking at, uh, it's got, I believe, a levy work session coming up in the summer in the, in the future here, once the, we have some updates from the core. Uh, but, uh, again, this program, uh, is not only to, uh, improve the levy system, which, which is flood protection for our downtown, but also for a number of our neighborhoods as well. And so, uh, A, shown in green is done, uh. And then B and C are the ones that are under construction, B is, is probably three-quarters to eighty percent of the way done. C is just started, so it's about, if you want to say fifteen percent complete there. Uh, and so that's at the work of the Confluence, C was the one that's been coordinated with the, the water trails. Uh, we then would move to D, uh, and work our way downstream. We've done, uh, interior drainage work to help with the neighborhoods as well, so you can see some pump stations that have been installed. Cohen Park is another example where we've added in a stormwater detention basin. We figured out that one, when we got into this, that the water was having trouble getting to the pump station and flooding out, uh, uh, the neighborhood there. There's a, uh, new development by Habitat for Humanity right off Eleventh and Murray, and, uh, it was flooding off that area, and so, uh, we, we put in a stormwater detention basin to relieve the pressure and store water upstream of that. That's been completed, here's the levy construction, kind of give you a perspective what it looks like. So, we, we, we rebuild the levies and compact the lift, compact everything in lifts, um. This was a more recent project along, this is by Principal, uh, Park, and so, uh, that, you, when you walked, when you're walking to Principal Park, uh, you can see, uh, there's a, that is the levy that kind of goes along the parking lot there. We installed these, uh, uh, flood walls that shorten the closing, uh, they're called closures, where we actually close up, uh, the lev, the flood protection system when the water gets to a certain stage. Oh, and there's the timeframe for, for those, so you can see, C under construction now, hope to be completed in twenty-twenty-five. Sidewalks, uh, you know, in, in twenty-nineteen, uh, our city, uh, took on a, an effort to fill, uh, sidewalk gaps in the city, starting with areas near schools, uh, and, on those school recommended walk routes on areas near bus stops. And so we've tout, we've been keeping track of that, that, that progress, uh, and since July of twenty-nineteen, we've installed nine, over ninety-five thousand feet, or eighteen miles, uh, in four years. And, uh, and then, uh, our city has put in, uh, a significant amount of American Rescue Plan Act funds into sidewalks, and so, uh, so you can see there's a very, uh, large program coming over the next couple of years, uh, over nine miles, uh, to get us to twenty-seven miles in about five years, so that's a lot of, a lot of sidewalks, to say the least.
Remind me, priority one was a hundred and eighty miles?
I apologize, a hundred and eighty, a hundred and ninety-eight, I, I'm, I'm a brain freeze on that one, yeah, it is around that number though.
So, that twenty-seven miles represents not quite one-sixth?
Correct, yep. Yeah, we've been averaging around a hundred and seventy dollars per lineal foot for sidewalk, that's what we've been tallying, so, yep.
Right, so if we, yeah, if we stay at this pace, we'll get all the priority one sidewalks done in thirty years.
Steve, have you been doing easy ones first, and, and, you know, because I know sometimes it requires a, uh, walls to be built and such, that really adds, adds to your costs, or?
We, we start, I would say, in FY nineteen-twenty, you know, when we started that, we wanted to get a lot of sidewalks in, so, um, so for example, the one on Euclid, I would say, one, well, it's a huge need, when people were walking there anyway, there was a worn path in the grass, that would have been considered an easy one. But after, probably the, probably starting in the second year, they, they, yeah, I would not say they, that, we started with the easy ones, but they have not been since, so then we have had to install walls or obtain easements from property owners to, to get these.
Some of them in Ward Four have been, there's a lot of work to get a sidewalk in, so.
Yeah, yep.
And then what, what does that add up to be like if you have to do a retaining wall?
Uh, you, if you do retaining walls and easements, you can get closer to like the three hundred to three hundred and fifty dollars per lineal foot. Per foot, per linear foot walk, yep, yep, yep.
There's, uh, somebody contacted me, a section that, it's a four-foot sidewalk, and to finish out the block, you're gonna put a five-foot, and why would we just not put a four-foot?
So, so one, the, the typical standards are, are five, in terms of like, one, a comfortable walking distance, and then two, uh, the Americans with Disabilities Act would say that if you were to put a, a, a four-foot sidewalk in, you would need to have a passing zone every hundred and fifty, two hundred feet. And so, it's kind of one of those, like, do you have, like, pieces where it winds out and then comes back in? Or do we just put it all in at, at, at five, which is what we would, you know?
Yeah, in this case, it's like four properties, so you go from a long stretch of four foot into five foot, so that was the question.
Yep.
As to why you would do that.
Yeah, the fi, the five is, is, is pretty much kind of a match, at least everywhere I've worked in the Midwest is kind of the norm for what you would install, because a four is tough for, is a little tight for two people to walk on. And then number two, if you just, if you all, if you, if we made a decision and say we're only gonna put in a four-foot sidewalk, we would be required to put in passing zones every hundred and fifty. every 150, 200 feet. So anyway, so, yeah. And I'll send this map out, but this is just kind of the numbers of, of the different phases. And it also includes kind of the future phases. Uh, but I'll, I'll, I'll email this map to you all at this meeting. So you can see it better as a PDF of it that you can zoom in and see the progress. We've been changing all the pink to what's complete. You know, the pink shows the areas where they've been completed and, um, and then the other colors are what's coming.
How many, how many miles are we maintaining the same number of miles? I, I guess that's already, that was, that, that was what was captured in the, with the ARPA dollars, the, the sort of increase.
The ARPA.
Phase six through nine, are those ARPA dollars?
Uh, eight, eight is really the, the ARPA. You see the big spike there. Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, there's.
So that, that's the, that's the lineal fee.
Yeah. Yep. Correct. Yep. And so that's coming, you know? The city, our city passed a, uh, one set or a local option sale and service tax. And so since we, of the first time we received those funds was August of 2019. Uh, and so you can see there the map, uh, folks have probably seen these signs all over our city. Uh, and so in 44 months, we've completed 45 lane miles of, of work. And, you know, again, 30 of those are in kind of local, local streets and 15 are more on major corridors. Uh, and so, uh, there's also a number of projects that you all have, have approved and authorized that are under construction now, uh, like the 2023 HMA paving program, Southeast Sixth Street, uh, East Court Avenue, which are being, uh, funded to, with local option sales and service taxes as well. I mentioned earlier, you know, a historical investment in infrastructure, right? So this graph gives you a comparison, uh, you know, I, when I started here in 2015, uh, I, I recall as you all did, you know, the, the folks of our, my, my fellow residents, our fellow residents asking to fix streets and fix sewers. And so, uh, I think this graph, in my opinion, definitely shows that response, uh, to say the least. Uh, and so, uh, like I said, I do want to add up, let me add up the amount of sewer work we've done in the past, uh, six years. It's unbelievable to miles and miles. Uh, and, and as well as a substantial investment in streets. And, and, uh, and so there's the numbers. Uh, you can see there 100, averaging over $100 million of capital improvement work that the city has done and taken on over the past five years. And so, um, so this chart kind of gives you that information.
Well, we've had a number of questions as we've gone along, but does anybody have any additional ones? Steve, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'm sure there'll be, uh, more questions as the days go by.
Yes, right. Yeah.
All right. Our next, uh, subject, capital planning.
All right. Mayor, council members, thanks again, Steve, for the presentation. We'll be bringing him back and other staff as we dive deeper into each of the categories of, within our CIP. But we thought, um, in working backwards from our next budget cycle, which is still six months away, uh, we would, we would break up, uh, the conversation into digestible pieces and start with the, uh, some of the financial resources. That's why we've got Nick coming up first. And then also additional analysis by staff. This is the first, uh, time that it actually made sense to, uh, fully understand, uh, every CIP category that you've seen in our books, uh, looking at what it would take and cost to maintain and replace, uh, each of those categories, knowing what their useful lives are and best practices for the industry in replacement and maintenance. This is something that you've heard us talk about for streets, but now we have the numbers, uh, based on all categories. And so, um, I believe the, the best way to digest this much information is to have this conversation this morning from a higher level and then bring back, uh, individual categories with the department directors and division heads, uh, to dive deeper over the next six months, uh, so that we all understand, uh, how close we are to, uh, continuing to catch up on these, uh, capital investments? Or are we actually, uh, starting to fall behind in some of them? So with that, I asked Finance to, uh, give us the starting point. And obviously, um, will give us some time today to, to go through your questions at this point. Again, the intent is not to make any final decisions, uh, in the sense of where the investments are occurring, uh, but to be knowledgeable at the end of the conversation about what it would take, uh, to maintain. Nick, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Honorable Mayor and Council Members, Nick Shaw, Finance Director. Um, as Scott alluded to, um, we'd be kind of looking at kind of future planning for, for capital, our capital improvement program. Um, and as we go through these topics, I'm going to kind of talk through some of the pieces that, um, kind of go into what we have to look at in, in the intention of our planning long-term. Um, we'll go into what we have as limitations, uh, from the state debt limit as well as the council policy. And then, uh, some stuff that, that S and P has, uh, wrote on our ratings when we go out to bond issuance every year. Um, give you an exam, give you examples of what we've done for bond issuances, uh, over the last 10 years. Um, as, uh, Steve has alluded to, we have had a large amount of investment. So the bond issuance that I'm going to be talking about is kind of the GO, which does affect our, uh, debt levy piece of our city levy. Um, and then we kind of finish off with the current capital improvement plan with what our anticipated issuances is over the next, uh, five years. Um, and then what we have for challenges, once we start looking at long-term planning and kind of getting away from where we're at right now with that large investment and what we need to be looking at to maintain what we currently have for assets and then our next steps as we look forward. From a state debt limit and council policy, uh, we are restricted from the state level at 5% of the 100% total valuation. So that has nothing to do with the assessed value. It is the 100% value of the, of the homes and commercial properties that we have in the city. Uh, the council has a policy to only utilize 80% of that. Um, and I'll kind of go through from our last completed audit where we're sitting. We are currently sitting with the fiscal year 22 audit. The total assessed value was, uh, just under 16 billion for valuation within the city. Um, as you look at that 5%, that comes up to, uh, just under 800 million. Um, from that, you take away the general obligation bonds that we have outstanding. Um, the only caveat to that is the 2017 C, which is an annually appropriated debt. So only the next portion of that is considered, um, a part of that limit. And then we also have, uh, other legal indebtedness, which is our TIF, uh, TIF rebates as well as leases that we have. Um, those, since they're annually appropriated as well on those TIF rebates, those are only a year, um, year reflected of what was actually budgeted as of that time. So what we have available for our legal debt limit at the, at the end of fiscal year 22 was just under, uh, 200 million. Uh, when we actually look at that from the 80% council, uh, we are at 75% currently with the fiscal year ending 22. So we're within 5% of, uh, the council policy. As we go through, um, the bond rating discussion that we have with S and P, um, I pulled a, a paragraph, uh, from their issuance report. Um, and they've repeated this. This is actually the exact same language that they've had, um, as I updated this slide from the year before. So this is not anything new, but they are looking at us, um, every year as we do our issuance and bring it up to our attention that our carrying charges are, um, approaching very high levels. And, um, if there's a diff, if there is a debt, there's material weakening, uh, that could lower our credit rating. And one thing to really kind of talk about, if we do get a lower credit rating, uh, basically it costs us more in interest. And then if it costs us more in interest, we would only, we can't borrow as much because we have to pay more in interest costs and can't have it on the principal side.
So Nick, the 75 and a quarter, uh, percentage, is that, I mean, within the last five years?
It's been, it's been steadily growing, uh, for percentages. We've been in 60 and it's been going, um.
60 when?
In the last five, six years.
Okay.
In the 60s, um, mid 60s.
High 60s or mid 60s?
Mid, mid to high 60s. Yep. So we've been steadily, and when I get to the history of issuance, you'll see kind of the significance over the last 10 years of what that growth is.
Can you explain with, with below average income?
Uh, that is based off of, uh, our, our demographics in the city of Des Moines in comparison. So from what we have, uh, at our, for what we have for our bond rating, we are lower in the, the average income that they would normally see for a, a double A. That's all of the other stuff that's kind of going into the rating. A lot gets us to kind of hit above our, uh, what our income actually is for the demographics. Going into the history of the bond issuance, I have this broken out in two different sides. Uh, the left side has the new issuances and the right side is the refunding. So basically as opportunities present themselves, we try to refund and, and save interest, interest costs as we can, um, with the current, um, interest structures that we have today. Uh, we won't be seeing that, um, in the current environment. But as you look through the 2013 through 22, and these are based off calendar years, not necessarily fiscal years, when you look at series of bonds. So, uh, when we're looking at these 10 years of issuance, you can see that, uh, 2013, 14, um, that 14 is kind of where it was, um, normally. And as you look at that, um, over those courses of time, the ones that have TIF directly after it is it was solely done by TIF. Some of the other ones, like for example, the 22A has TIF issuances within that. It's just we restructure it a little bit differently. Some of those years where we kind of put both TIF and debt levy together. Um, but as you can see, in any of those years where you've got 20, uh, 2013, you had 37 and then you went 25, 40, 42. It bounced around in that 20 to 40 realm in the past. Um, and then when you get to, uh, 2019, it went up to almost 85. And then the next year was 85 and then, um, in 21, we had a 90. And we did have a little bit less with the 22 of, of, of 69, uh, 70 million that we had in our current, uh, our last issuance that we just did. If you look at our current capital improvement plan, this is what we have, uh, anticipated, um, going out for the next. So this next issuance that we are looking at, um, coming in this fall would be about that 77 million mark. Uh, then it goes, starts rationing down to, to 62 and then about 40 in those, those later years. What we've, uh, what we've modeled in our debt service model as we look at, um, where we anticipate going forward, we have budgeted that 35 million range, um, going out in fiscal year 2028 and beyond, uh, in our current models. So as we're working through this and as Scott alluded to, we are kind of going to be looking at it as, um, looking at it from a backwards end of seeing what we can fund through GO, uh, GO debt and then what are our other options to kind of go forward as we kind of look at this. So what is excluded on these GO bonds is the 1,200 locusts, if that, for that possible purchase. That debt is something different than the GO bonds. That's a general fund note as what we're looking at right now within our due diligence.
So all of this bonding that you've got for 2026 is all the capital improvements that you recommended in our book?
Yes. This, if you, yep, if you.
That's the 39 is everything that's in here right now.
Uh, for the GO bonds. Yes.
Do you want to explain the date? So like the 20, 20, 26 bonds in that last year typically paid for?
The fiscal year 27.
Fiscal year 27.
So these are based off of the, the calendar year that the bonds would be issued. So our 2023 bonds would be in the fall for the fiscal year 24.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah. So if you were to go.
Are matching up what we voted on.
Yep. If you go to, uh, our capital improvement plan, uh, you would see that these would be the total of the GO issuances, um, within that plan. To also kind of let you, uh, look at our large current capital improvement plan and the, and our levy as what it is, how it has been backed. Um, you'll see that this, the blue area is the area that we currently have for our debt service levy, um, and where we anticipate within the current capital improvement plan. Uh, the gray area is what shows our local option dependence on keeping that rate down. So you can see the number within the gray of the difference of where we would have to be to be able to pay off the debt that we have, uh, with the, what we've been issuing over the past, uh, five, six years.
Has, has that trend, is that actual numbers, 21?
Yeah. So as we, yep, as we, as we redo the model, um, I basically eliminate the local option dollars coming in, and that's where the rate would have had to be to be able to do the bond issuances that we've done.
Linda?
Here's me about this is we don't know what's going to happen to our local option sales tax in the future. We don't know if the legislature is going to do something. How can we, I mean, we should be planning in anticipation of losing some of those funds, shouldn't we?
That's all that Scott talked. That's an unlimited analysis though. Um, we need to be cautionary about how much of our sales tax, um, is going to capital versus operations first and foremost. Um, because obviously we, we don't want to be dependent on annual operations, or at least we want that to be a small portion of our sales tax. Then it, then it becomes a question of, um, yes, do, can we plan conservatively with the sales tax revenue and still maintain a debt service levy rate? And without starting to, um, choose numbers of, you know, how much reduction would we anticipate? It's, it's, it's very, it's a very difficult analysis, I guess, is my point.
But we've got some capital improvement that has to be done. I mean, we, we have to do it. We may have to adjust our operating budget.
Operating or the debt service rates, the tax rates, because what we've been able to do is maintain it, uh, thus far with sales tax. If there is any hit to our sales tax revenue because of the state, um, this is where it would be felt first and foremost.
And we promised our residents, we're not going to raise your tax.
Well, the intent of the sales tax is to keep your property taxes lower.
At that 1684, whatever.
1661.
60 what?
61.
Oh, 60. Okay. I was close.
You're close.
Yep. So now again, we've, we've gone through this period of being able to play catch up on our capital investments, the charts that Steve showed as well as, is what Nick is showing us. Now we need to transition into what is our maintaining level of capital investment that's necessary and how do we pay for that? And do we even have enough is the question, not to steal the, uh, the comments that are yet to come in the presentation, but essentially, um, we have to shift our mindset to, uh, are we even able to reliably depend on the sales tax staying here and the amount of debt that we can issue? Is that enough to cover our assets that we have today for maintaining and replacing?
I don't think it is. So when we, so when we look at. So when we, so when we look at our, this debt model, we do have this out to fiscal year forty or fifty. When we look at this, we look at this long-term because when we're issuing debt, it's a twenty-year debt. And so from this, this is about the peak that we're going to see that gray bar go. I think there might be maybe one more year of increase, but then it's supposed to kind of level out and come down. But again, that's from an assumption of thirty, thirty-five million of bond issuances after fiscal year twenty-eight, which would be that next year when we go through this budget work. You can see from the prior slide of what we've issued and where we're planning to issue, we're down to about forty. All we need to do is kind of get that down to thirty-five and we would be matching our debt service model.
And I think about all the plans. I mean, we keep touting these plans. We've got, now we've got a DAP DSM, we've got MOVE DSM, we've got all of these plans that, that lay out all these things that we're going to do like sidewalks and streets and, you know, all these things that we've given to our residents and said, here, here's our plan, but I'm not sure we can realistically complete.
So, so what this is going to be?
And I know they're long-term, but.
Yep, so what, so what we're going to do from this particular conversation is kind of say, if, if all we did, and I'll kind of get into some of these slides a little bit more detail, but what we have for existing assets today, what will it cost us to replace them on a regular basis? So I'll kind of go into that as we go.
Before you do though, Nick, there's two, there's two themes here I want to take another stab at.
Okay.
In the background, for years now, we've recognized the potential for the instability of sales tax, just from the economy standpoint. So take the legislative aspect out of it. We know that it's a more volatile revenue stream. And because of that, what we've been doing, and you'll see it in the annual report to the public that we put out every year for the sales tax, is we do have cash within the sales tax. Ideally, we would be using less sales tax to pay down the debt service and having it available to pay for projects with cash as opposed to issuing debt and then having to use this, because this also involves interest that's accruing each year, right? And so you could take that out of the equation if you had cash saved up and that cash would then be a buffer for any legislative or economic hits that might come along. And so we are at that point where we can't, we are not adding to that cash balance anymore. We're utilizing that for cash projects. And again, that's another reason why we need to shift our focus to, we've, we've gotten to the maximum that we can commit from the source, sales tax.
And we're never going to get those good interest rates.
I would not anticipate that for fifteen to twenty years for certain. Yes. And even when we do return to that point, the refinancings in the way they work today, you have to wait until those, that eight-year call gets here. And so there's, there's some extra challenges. So you, you fully should not be expecting savings in debt service over the next, at least eight to ten years for certain.
It's gone.
So sale, sales tax dollars for general fund, what, that should be only buyer?
There's a few, there's a few items. No, there's, there's a few items. Our care program is funded through that as well and there, but it's a very small percentage. And that is actually the next conversation we're going to bring forward. Again, reminding you that this is just an amount to digest today and we'll bring back a more robust sales tax, more.
Revenue funding.
Yep, and other, other funding sources that are available to us in the next conversation and operations as well with programming. The other theme, though, I wanted to make sure we understood is because there's an incredible amount of value generally with planning well. I'll put it that way. We do a lot of plans. One of the very first benefits of doing these, any of these plans is to understand what choices we have with new programming, new projects versus going in to existing assets and making a purposeful change. I'll give you an example. The Vision Zero is, is a good example of that where by going through that exercise, we understand how we should be adding assets in a smarter way from a safety standpoint. But then there's another benefit to doing that type of planning that says, now if you decide to put additional resources to going into assets that don't need to be replaced based on condition or their useful life, you could make additional improvements, but that's an enhancement. That's another category, a different category of you're adding something to the inventory you don't have today. And so every plan, whether that's ADAPT that you'll hear about, options, there's, there's always that first value of every one of those plans of as we add assets, this is the smart way to do that. I don't want to lose track of that.
But it also creeps the scope of, you know, the Councilwoman Westergaard's point. It also will creep the scope of the work as we enter into these plans.
If you so choose.
Right.
And so that.
But if we make it our policy, then we, we've chosen that.
No.
If we adapt it.
The policy can always adjust on what we can afford. And so it is an exercise that we need to become more sophisticated at each year and understanding that if, if there is a desire to do an enhancement to a project, again, every category of capital is subject to this. A park equipment, if we need to replace a park equipment, do we have other categories of capital investments that we want to engage in? Adding a, an extra trail, adding a spray park, a spray ground or something of that nature? We need to be very cognizant and when we're making those decisions, that we have it budgeted elsewhere that can be pulled into that project that's at hand.
Or you make the decision, what do you not want to do going forward? If something is doing it the way we've always done it, should we look at the new way?
Yes, that's exactly.
So that it's a balance of, so at least we know what we want to do so we can add on if we have that opportunity. We could have great sales tax or we could have for that one year or whatever. But I think we do have to be mindful, you know, it just gives us a better.
Yep, so I do not want any thoughts that by planning, we're making mistakes in some fashion. The first element of every one of these plans that has come forward to you is about how to do things smarter as we move forward and we need to add assets or we need to replace assets to do it in a smart way. The added benefit to each of those plans is if you so choose, we could put even more resources towards it to go after assets that don't have a need to be replaced today, but have a safety element, have a historic preservation, have an ADAPT, have a downtown planning aspect to it.
But we're going to have to take from something else in order to do that.
Yes, either take or decide to do less of something else in the future.
So as I'm getting into the next slides, I want to kind of point out a great work that my finance department did with the correlation of all the other departments, because what we ended up doing is we took our existing assets and looked at kind of a, a future year to try and disconnect what current projects are going on and try and look at, what is it if we wanted to maintain our assets today? We looked at a timeframe of twenty thirty through twenty forty, kind of that ten-year window. And as we did that, we based this on all of our existing assets, so the lane miles, the linear feet, the number of playgrounds, all the different components in these different areas. And we did inflation costs for that, that it, it cost of twenty thirty to twenty forty. As we did that work, this, this is an oversimplified table and we can get into further details later, but we were intending to do it kind of more of a high level for, for you guys to kind of realize the situation that we're, that we're looking at. So as we look at streets, bridges, facilities or municipal buildings, all the different, different components that we have, the capital costs are the costs that we anticipate as on average in a one year. So that's the estimated annualized cost over that ten-year window to maintain our existing assets that we have today.
That's per year?
Per year.
Okay.
So almost eighty million a year to, to maintain our current assets in that ten-year window on average. Some years will be higher, some years will be lower, but on average, it would be about eighty million. From that, other funding sources that we have would be, you know, federal grants, gaming money, local option that we currently have towards like our, our streets that we have seven million a year going into that. TIF, TIF revenue bonds, road use tax, GMT funds is another facility for the, the fire stations as well as some of the ambulances and apparatus. So when we come into those other fundings that we have anticipated, that takes away about twenty-four million, which then leaves fifty-six million that would be needed to be covered by geo, geo bonds. As I had just talked about in our prior slides, we have been showing or planning only thirty-five. So when I go into a little bit more details with that, our annualized estimated costs of almost eighty million, our other sources of twenty-four, that shows a twenty-one million dollar deficit annualized. And that does not take into consideration any funding for new or expanded projects. That is just maintaining what we currently have. So for parks, for example, if we have budgeted for an equipment replacement, it would be just to replace that piece of equipment. And this is based off of the concept of the streets should be kept at that, at, at the level at which that we were trying to do, the index that we have of sixty, as well as park, different park facilities being replaced after the, the recommended useful life of fifteen, twenty, or depending on what that is. So we have a lot of information that analysts work with the departments to come up with, what is that, what is that yearly average cost would work, look like? And so it was a, a big deep dive that we took in, took into consideration as we put together this, pieces of information. So what that, with that deficit, obviously we're trying to work backwards on our general obligation funding, so we have to look into that. And so you can digest this information and what we have to do is bring in July.
It sounds like we're not going to be able to do anything. I mean, that's, that's kind of how you, how you're trying to lay it out. I mean, I don't, I, I don't, I don't know. I mean.
Well, you're still doing all the, you know, the roads.
No.
Well, I mean.
We have, we have to look.
Yeah, it shows that we're not able to do anything and still maintain what we have in thirty, is that, is that, am I missing something?
We would have to look at other funding sources or what it looks like in our model to do more than thirty-five million.
If, if we're talking about adding an asset, a roadway, something that's brand new.
It says we can't even take care of the asset, so yeah.
Yeah, we would have to look at both filling that deficit and then anything that we would want to do beyond that for existing.
So we will come back to you with what options we're seeing.
Go back to that other slide. I just want to make sure I understand this because I, there's a twenty-one million dollar deficit annually.
Currently, yes.
In geo capacity.
Yep.
For just the assets that we have today.
As we, as we formulate the inflated costs from twenty thirty to twenty forty. Yep.
Okay.
Beyond the five years we have planned out.
Yeah, beyond the five years and technically.
So we've got time to figure this out.
And we just had, historically took on ninety-four million dollars of ARPA funds and now we're going to come to us and, and tell us this.
Thank goodness we have the ARPA funds.
And variables are continuously changing. As you might imagine, part of the analysis that, that Nick does on a regular basis is the interest rates have changed on the, on the debt.
But we knew that the interest rates were going to change eventually. That's, that's nothing new. The interest rates have never been historically as low as they've been.
That's correct. In our debt models, we do, we do adjust our interest rates in the future years.
I guess I'd like to see how we're going to take care of that deficit first before we start doing any other projects.
And that's why we're having this starting conversation, because we've got six months to figure this out within the CIP.
Well, it, it sounds to me like we're not doing anything in CIP or the general fund. We have a, a hiring freeze that we're, we're not, we're not doing anything. I mean, we're, we're not going to be able to pay our bills in twenty thirty.
So there are a lot of options.
I mean, that's how, that's how you're laying this out. I don't necessarily agree with you, but you've laid it out that way. So now I'm calling, I'm calling you to tell you that, how, how, how do you expect us to do anything?
So again, this is a five years.
He said that, that he's going to come back in addition. He wants you to see the situation as is today.
All right.
And we're going to come back and talk about it.
Great.
And look at options.
And again, we're talking about fiscal year twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty. These, we now know what our target needs to be just to maintain our assets in all categories. And so we'll come back to you with you with what the options are to get that done or quite frankly, to pull back. Because understand again, historically, we had not kept up with what it was taking annually. That analysis hadn't even been done a decade ago. And so it was a matter of just do what we can afford in the early, in the nineties and in early two thousands. And so we knew we were getting further and further behind, but nobody ever did the analysis to see just how far behind we were getting. And so now we're at that.
We're going to get behind again because we're not going to be able to do anything.
Well, okay, I would ask council to be careful. We're talking about an eighty million dollar annual investment is our target. So we're doing a lot and we're doing a lot more than anything we've done historically. So this, this is a situation where we knew, and I, we've talked about this for years, we could not maintain the amount of high-level CIP forever. We are coming down off of that and we need to now rethink through what is our new norm for annual investments. And then we now know what the target should be. How do we get about eighty million dollars a year done? And then think about enhancements at, at a later date, frankly.
So basically we were so far behind is the reason that we had to pump so much in because we never had a plan that really could stabilize through. So this is an effort to stabilize, maintain what we currently have instead of having it going behind and then determine what we can add on. Is that what we're at?
Yeah, I, I think the, I think the biggest thing to kind of take is the, what was presented on the pavement condition index, the PCI, that, that was presented in, in the past was done for streets and how much investment we should be doing over the course of time to be able to maintain our streets at that level. That's what we did at current date is, is fourteen million. As we look at that, we, we did that for the streets and so in discussions with Scott, before we get to a twenty thirty type of timeframe, needing to plan out better, we wanted to look at that for all assets. And that's, this is what we looked at to do that. Now, if we look at what we are currently investing in these, in these different project areas that I had on that table, it is drastically different than what we have today. So the conversation we'll have to say is, do we go with this type of plan and, or do we tweak it knowing that we have to try and maintain it maybe a little bit differently because eighty will be very hard to do with any additional.
So could you, could you go back to that slide that has the eighty million by? No, but yeah, that one. So is what you're saying, this is what it would cost to maintain at existing levels, but we're not doing this today on the other? Or this is what we are doing? This represents sort of status quo, what we're doing today?
If we want to properly, if we want to properly maintain at our existing assets, this is be the investment that we would have to.
Right, I, I get the properly maintain, but have we historically been properly maintaining all of these other facilities at this level?
No, the, the, the simple answer is no.
So we have not, so this would represent a higher level of service than we are currently providing today or a higher level of maintenance of these assets than we have traditionally done.
Yes, if you look over the past ten years, we've done a lot of expand, we've done a lot of expansion over the last ten years also.
And improvements.
Improvements, yeah. Improvements, yep.
Right.
Back to our discussion earlier where we talked about bridges and we talked about we could do a complete replacement of the Walnut Street Bridge for $16 million. It's gonna last for how many ever years? Or do we spend $15 million and just do a pedestrian or just make some repairs for 5 million? Are those the kind of choices? I mean, it, in my, in my simple brain, that's kind of what I'm thinking. We have to make the choices. Do we want to spend to replace? Do we want to just maintain?
Yes, and, and, and part of that conversation-
And I look at this and I think it'd be better to spend $16 million and replace it, but where do we get that money?
Right. And that's where do you get that money is the last piece of this because each project has uh, you know, different funding sources. Uh, we're focused pretty heavily today on the geo needs. That's the geo debt. But the Walnut Street Bridge is an example of where we're able to use TIF funds, the downtown TIF. And so with each one of these projects and each one of these categories, you have different funding sources that may be available.
That's a good reminder.
Yeah. And so um, road use tax is in play for some of these, but obviously not all of them.
And GMT is another one that's within the facilities and fire as well, which is a newer funding source that we didn't have in the past either.
But we might be losing some of these federal grants that we've applied for. I mean, we may not get them because of what's happening.
True.
Federally. We can't really depend on, on some of this work to be funded with grants from the Fed.
And I would say in, in this scenario, when you're talking about like streets in that 14 million of streets, that only assumes a little over half a million in federal grants. So we did do on, a bit on the conservative side as well on, on our assumptions, but it's ma, it's maintaining our existing assets versus expansion or new. So tend to be those grants would be for, for newer features that you don't existingly have.
Another example would be the MPO funds, the STBG funds. Those are in the other funding and we know that we get uh, a certain percentage essentially of, of those funds moving forward. And so we'll be able to make decisions on where should those STBG funds go if we can match it up with either TIF or geo bonds to get projects done.
Explain me about assets then. So we're not able to create any new assets? No parks? No trails? No more sidewalks? No, I mean, I guess I'm really confused that you're, you're saying that we're maintaining existing assets. We've got, we've got parks that we're looking at expanding and growing and, and doing work in. And so those aren't, those are-
That's not reflected in these numbers.
Right. I understand that. So now what you're saying is that we're not able to do those things when 2030 arises, that we're not able to maintain the assets.
Again, this is an annualized over that course of that 10 years. So we just need to be looking at things a bit differently if we want to be able to maintain and add assets long-term.
And you're gonna come back to us and tell us how we're gonna look at them differently? I just, we were just here today so you can lay this doomsday and then you're gonna come back and, and tell us how we're gonna do it?
Well, as we-
I don't understand. I thought we had until noon. You, you don't have it prepared? How we're gonna do something?
So as, as we put this together, um, it was not, uh, was not in our purview to think that it was going to be this much of a difference between what we issue at 35 versus the 56. So this means that additional, uh, additional information needs to be put together so that you guys can make informed decisions going forward on any of the capital improvement planning that we do in the future.
And again, I want to make it clear, we have a gap to solve. We are still, we're, we'll now be able to make choices of, well, we can, we can fund 95% of this category that's necessary to replace and take a couple hits and then move on.
It, and it would be helpful for me to understand what sort of assumptions go into the, the, those various buckets. So for example, when we look at the park, the parking line, uh, I mean, we have traditionally, what I, I think it's, we, we have replaced playgrounds like every 30 years and that, that, that's slow. Like is, is this assuming that we replace playgrounds at that 30-year pace for us today? This is assuming we replace playgrounds at the pace that we would like to, which is maybe 15 years and not 30 years.
Correct.
Like we've been doing.
Correct.
So for example, if we continue at our 30-year, that $15 million cost would be lower. This is if we were to do it as we would like to, to provide the best service, which we're not at today.
Correct.
And so I would just, the word best there, it, it's standards.
Standards.
What are the, what are the industry standards?
Industry standards.
The best would be even faster probably.
Sure. Okay. There, there's, we, we would, we would like to replace playgrounds more frequently than we do today.
Make sure they're safe. Correct.
This reflects replacing them more frequently than we do today. We're still providing a level of service with our 78 parks where we've got, I, and we've, we've actually, thanks to Ben's good work and our parks good work. I mean, we, we fill some of that gap with public-private partnerships. We, we do work where we get a lot of donations so that we're, we're doing some of that work even if our budget doesn't, doesn't reflect this. And my guess is that 300,000 and other funding is, I mean, we, I know our parks department raises more than that.
But we, we, we can't necessarily count on those for exist-
Right. 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 But that, that's, that's not reflected. So from, you know, it would be helpful to understand what, what level we're talking about because it sounds like this is a level that we haven't necessarily funded previously. So for-
That is correct.
I know we've got work, for example, we've got older facilities that are older fire department or fire stations, older libraries that we're talking about potentially replacing some of those things. And it's a question of how long, you know, in an ideal world, maybe we'd replace it at, I don't know what, you know, pick a useful life number. And, and part of what we're, what we're talking about here is maybe instead of replacing at the end of 20 years, we replace it 30 or-
Or 20, yeah, 25.
Or 25.
Uh, or if there's different funding available in a grant type of situation.
Right. But it, it would be helpful to understand sort of what those assumptions are in a little more detail and how that compares with what we have been doing.
Instead of just laying out the doomsday for us?
Well-
What do you think? Yeah.
I mean-
$300,000 from the parks? You don't think we get more in the grants?
I, but I, I, I don't feel like it's doomsday. I think like you need to-
I know it's not, but that's how it's been perceived to all of us here.
Well, well-
It's not.
We need to level set.
I think it's a reality, I think it's a reality we need to face that if we want a certain standard to keep things up so they don't get so far behind like they have in the past, that we have a good plan going forward. Is that, I mean, if it's, I mean, when you look at the amount that it is, it's huge amount that we're still investing.
And, and these are inflated.
Quite honestly, if we had five years to some of these things, you could get to that 21 million a heartbeat probably. I mean-
These are inflated dollars as well.
Right. So not that anything's going down. But I think you have to have a game plan so you don't get into the condition that we were in 20 years ago. Because we are playing catch-up and a lot of the money we're inputting, when you look at our roads, is because we didn't do it, we did it on the less expensive way to repair. So now we're paying that price to do it more often. So hopefully the things we're investing in right now last longer, that maybe these numbers are inflated, that it won't be that big a hit.
I, I would like to see that graph that, and I see Jonathan out there, where we started with the streets and how much we needed to invest with the new structure of carrying them all out instead of overlaying. And I knew at some point, which I'm hoping that that's relatively near within the next five years, that we would start going down, not continue to go up in the spending.
Uh, no, no, we'll, we'll continue to need to spend the 14 million annually on maintaining the condition that we talked about, which I think was the 60 on that scale.
Yeah, it was 60, uh, PCI. It was 14 million and what we show here is an inflated at, at, at 16.8, 16.8.
And-
Annualized.
And so we've given that same amount of attention and detail to each category now within the CIP.
So we never catch-up? That was never in the graph?
We are improving the condition of the streets on an annual basis with the $14 million to get to that, that 60 on the scale. And then we would need to continue that investment to stay at 60 thereafter. And obviously you'd have to increase the inflationary, the cost of money. And so yes, our intent is to come back with each of these subcategories to, to talk, break it down so you understand um, what, what the challenges are with each one of them and, and give us an opportunity to have the discussions about prioritizing.
And also what assumptions really went into this on, you know, when, when we anticipate, you know, park, uh, park shelter being replaced or park equipment or um, how much it costs per square foot on a, on a municipal building that we should be putting in for, for the cost of maintaining those buildings on, ongoing.
And none of these numbers include any other building? The armory moving, the police station?
This, this does, this does, this does assume that we've moved forward with something um, out of armory and out of PD.
Okay.
And maintaining the city hall.
So the frequency we're looking at is about once a month to come back with a group of these topics to get even more refined.
By department?
Yeah, but we would have the numbers by department. I have, I have those, but there's a, it's more of a numbers piece that I don't think you guys will want to look at that detail uh, that way. And I think it's better if we have the specific department directors come in and speak, talk to each, to each one so that they can give you more of the information of uh, what assumptions were put in for uh, expected useful lives and, and different things like that.
So is this kind of like gold, silver and bronze plans?
Something like that. Yeah.
I hate to say Cadillac and Kia or Cadillac and Yugo or something, but okay.
Tesla.
Pinto's.
Pinto, geez, there's-
Uh, and then after, yeah. So I, I just wanted to at least get you this high level of discussion and allow you guys to kind of see at least what we need to start to look at in prioritization and also look, look towards the, the proper planning in the future to make sure that we can keep moving things forward. Any other questions?
I think you've given us a lot to think about.
Yeah.
And we're looking forward to all the follow-up good advice on how we're gonna meet our goals.
Scott's phone's gonna be ringing off the hook.
Yeah. Scott, any closing thoughts that you might have?
No. I appreciate everybody's time. And again, we'll set up another discussion probably about a month out.
All right.
Do we have a workshop next Monday?
We have lots of solutions. We're just gonna lay them out.
Is there a workshop Monday?
Yes. Uh, it's a three-week period. So June, fall.
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have another meeting until the 12th.
Correct.
Are we having a workshop?
All right. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you all for being here.
I did not have it on my watch. I can't see that. She said something.